Till you're called upon to speak. And for those joining us here in the council chambers, if you would please mute your cell phones. All right, everybody ready? Should be, I'm the one who's late. All right. The city of Glendale Common Council is now in session. I'll rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmalsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
The comment Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will move on consent agenda. We have the adoption of the minutes of the last meeting and the approval on filing of monthly reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
I moved.
Moved by Alderman Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Doherty, any discussion? Without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda adopted and move on. Unfinished business, we have back before us Judge Lipscomb to discuss the resolution establishing procedures for outstanding and uncollectible court debt. Mr. Warwick, Alderman Doherty and I met with the judge two or three weeks ago. I believe we've worked out a good process and procedure here, so I was submitted to everybody. The resolution was slightly altered from the one we saw, say, six weeks ago or so. Alderman Doherty, did you want to add anything?
I think it was a good meeting and it brought good. You have to do something to get things off the books eventually, but you also, the judge wanted some ways to reinforce things. And I think it's a very good balance and it's a good, it's a good resolution.
Okay.
A move we adopted.
Okay, so move out the resolution is second.
Second.
Second of Alderman Gelhard. Judge, you've joined us. Is there anything additional you'd like to say or is it, does the resolution and the process speak for itself at this point? Okay. I like how you do court then. Alderwoman Vukovich. You need to speak into your mic.
I'm a little confused. I don't understand some of this, this language. What does this basically say? Cause the permanently stay outside, it, it confused me from before, so.
So we have some debt that is old enough that it's been through the state collection system. And it is deemed to be uncollectible through multiple different means. It's about $700,000. But the judge doesn't have any ability, a stay means that he would essentially wipe it off the books. It just doesn't exist anymore. The cases are old enough, and so that's what it would give the judge permission to be able to do. There's about $4 million in debt that is in some process of being collected. But the state has not, through the state debt collection system, has not told us it's uncollectible yet. So we'll continue to try and collect on that debt.
We're only doing this for the stuff that the state has said uncollectible and then it's just gonna be wiped. We're not doing anything other than just wiping it out. Okay.
Right. It's all got to be of a certain age anyway. Yep, yep. All right, any other questions? Discussion, Alderman Schmalsling?
It looks to me like it's a five year is what really things landed on. Other than that, it looked pretty much like a last time, correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those know? Okay, so five yeses and one abstention. Carries? The resolution has been adopted. We do have one other, I know I'm gonna ask actually to move item five C up. And that's recognizing an employee for years of service. I'm actually gonna turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. I think tonight we would like to recognize Judge Lipscomb for his 25 years of service with the city of Glendale. We put together a proclamation recognizing his years of service and the numbers of elections that he has won. Does anyone else from our fine audience want to make a comment? Ms. Bersh, would you like to make a statement tonight?
Other comments or questions? All right, can I get a motion then to adopt the resolution, please? Move by Alderwoman Shaw, second of Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? Okay, I'm gonna ask for unanimous consent without objection. It's adopted by unanimous consent. And can we can we get a picture with the judge, all of us with the judge and we'll award the, I believe we have it as a plaque over here, so.
I did, I just looked behind you.
I saw you, I saw you doing.
Like, I looked in that picture of, because I knew you went out to talk to somebody at one point.
No, I was in the picture. I just was right behind you.
I couldn't even see you. Come back down.
But we don't, we're fine, we're fine.
I've got Photoshop abilities, I can fix that.
You put her in lots of pictures.
She'll be all our faces. Okay, I have a picture of Tamika that I took a few years ago at a Democratic Party event. She's got the derpiest look on her face. I'm gonna send that one to you. That's what I want. Try and hide.
Hey, just remember, I'm a Nissan Alpud driver.
Yeah, get cheese to go the way out. All right. We will. We're all back. Okay, we will move on then with our other new business. We have next is item for review is participation in Milwaukee's Juneteenth Parade. This is on here tonight, just to sort of get a feel for the members of the council if we want to be in it. We'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting to allocate the money to pay for the parade entry as well as to purchase candy. Alderwoman Vukovich and I spoke the other day, we think probably $300, it's $100 to register for the parade, right? Hundred and forty, so maybe 350, it would give us like 200 bucks to buy a whole bunch of bags of candy so we could throw candy. Okay. All right, so we'll put that on the agenda for our next meeting. This was only on here for review. Do you want to tell us a little bit? I know a number of us have marched in. Do you want to tell us about the route?
The route of the city of Glendale being in is in 16, I walked with, as a school board member. But when I became an alderwoman in 17, we are the only city that actually participates as a city. Now, there are other electeds that do that, but we are collectively a city. And I love that fact that we're showing. I think most of all of you have, have walked. Well, obviously you're new, so, but you have, you have walked, you know, we've all had some portions of us have walked or represented. And I thank you very much. And they're appreciative of a city because they always say, oh, city of Glendale is the only one that comes in. There have been other groups, but never actually city to support this. And I thank you very much. This year, I think we will be working with the school behind us. So they may possibly have a drum line with the city of Glendale going in. And obviously you'll be surrounded by my people, but I just thank you for just always being considerate and wanting to participate in things that actually matter, not just to to Milwaukee, but our constituents. So, thank you very much and we will, I'll have more details because they will have a meeting. They have not had the meeting yet of where we're gonna mark, or where we're gonna be stationed and all that stuff.
What's the date of the parade? Because I don't understand the 19th.
It's always June 19th in Milwaukee.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter what time, year, day, date, nothing. It's always June 19th on Monday.
They don't like move it to the weekend. Okay.
No, it's Monday. Ours is Monday.
Yep, yep. All right, so we will, then everyone's okay with there's a consensus we want to, okay, good, then we'll have a resolution and then a, and ask for a small allocation to for our entry in the parade at our next meeting. So, and I'll play something then on next door that we're gonna have a city group. Because we have done that, I've done that the last few years and we've had just random people show up and want to march in the parade with us. And that's why we put in as a city entry.
One more thing, believe it or not, it always rains at the beginning of the parade, no matter what. It's usually hail and rain and about 7:30, 8 o'clock, it stops and it's beautiful. So don't let it fool you. We're still going out because it will stop at around 7:30, 8 o'clock.
Right. Okay, then we're set then we'll consider the Juneteenth, we're making, we'll make plans then for Juneteenth and we'll have the consideration of it for adoption at our next meeting. Okay, next is the 2022 annual report, Mr. Warwick.
Thank you, mayor. In front of you is the 2022 annual report for publication, which summarizes the city's activities throughout our various departments, including our North Shore collective engagements that we have as various communities for such things as library, fire and other things. So if anyone has any questions regarding the report, if not, we will move to publish it. I see a couple changes on page one that we will make that I saw, so we will move to make a couple of changes for some of the appointments and some employment positions.
And is there any feedback from any members?
Just one thing, nothing that I think we have to hold up the publishing for, but just some of the employment numbers might need to be revisited in the future. Just for the largest employers. That was the only thing I could think of.
The, the, the look at it, and Mr. Fellows can probably correct me if I'm wrong, is we were waiting for an employment number from Bay Shore that we did not receive in time. So that's why they were excluded from the list, but I would assume they're, they would be one of the top employers.
Well, so I was noticing Nicolay High School is on here, but Glendale River Hills School District would also have well over, I mean, I think the school district has a hundred and something employees, is in between. I know, but you were like, like five minutes ago, so.
We will, thank you, we'll look at all that before we publish it again to confirm our employment numbers.
Okay, yeah, that was the only question I had as well, so. Any other questions or comments? Can we get a motion then to approve the 2022 annual report? Alderwoman Vukovich, second of Alderman Schmalsling, all those in favor of approving, please say aye. Host. Or is approved. And next is used vehicle dealers and used parts license for Van Horn Auto Group to operate what used to be Hobbs Honda is now Van Horn Honda at 6100 North Green Bay Road. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, Megan, do you have anything to add?
I think just because of the change of name, we have to issue a new license to the new owner, correct? Okay. All right, can we get a motion then to approve the a Shaw, seconded by
Second.
Doherty. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know? Motion carries. Next is an ordinance amending sections 10.4.2 and 10.4.4 of the code pertaining to all train vehicles and off-road motor vehicles. Think this came forward because the police want to be able to legally use theirs on the, I thought the police could go anywhere in their vehicles.
That is correct. We like to be legally able to operate that and it also helps out the DPW. Because right now it just says maintenance vehicles and they technically weren't allowed on something else. So when you just add municipal vehicles, it covers everybody, so we're all good.
All right, can a motion to approve ordinance, please?
I moved.
Alderman Gelhard, second of Alderwoman Shaw. Any discussion, Alderman Schmalsling?
I just have to ask, are we getting a snowmobile anytime soon?
I haven't approached it yet, but no, I don't think we're gonna get a snow.
Somebody donates one, you'll take it.
I just saw it funny in the ordinance, so, okay.
All right. All those in favor of adopting a new ordinance, please say aye. Those know? Motion carries. The next one is an ordinance creating Title III, Chapter VII, Title Professional Fees and Escrow. I think this probably requires a little bit of explanation, so is that be Mr. Warwick or Mr. Fellows?
I will let Mr. Fellows lead the way on this, and then if any questions, we are both here for any questions that you guys may have.
So essentially what this ordinance does is it sets up some standards for professional fees as well as escrow. So currently what happens as an example, a developer comes into the city of Glendale and they want to develop a project. They have a fairly insignificant charge to go to planning commission, a couple hundred dollars, and then they have their building permits. But there's a lot of other services that we provide. So for instance, our engineers review all their stormwater. So we receive bills from our engineer that can be hundreds, if not thousands of dollars for a particular private development. Also, Carl and I have been working along with Charlie to get our erosion control system working more smoothly, and that's also being handled by Clark Deeds. So there's monthly inspections required under your MS4 permit or after a rain event. So those run about $150 a visit. And so what we would like to do is actually try to recapture some of those funds from the developers. So the cost of development is on the developer rather than the general fund. For some things we do, we have traditionally billed back to the developer, but for a lot of items we haven't. And so this would allow us to do that. In addition, a lot of communities have an escrow system where a developer will put maybe $2,500 or $5,000 depending on the, the size and scope of the the project. And then when that bill comes in, the city can pay that bill and the escrow is then reduced. And at some point, then the escrow would need to be replenished, or it may be just the escrow would be estimated for a certain amount. And then the balance at the end of the project would be returned and that would allow bills to be paid a little quicker rather than us having to pay the bill and then try to get the developer or wait a couple of months for them. So I see a couple of hands up, so.
Couple of questions on that. One, when people are developing something, are they provided with a budget or what's this expected? Because you don't have much control. You give a city money, they take it, they start paying bills, you're not pleased with the service, what you got. And you're the one ultimately paying for it. So I'm a little concerned about this, that the person who's actually footing the bill loses control.
So I can tell you for what we've estimated for erosion control for a development, for instance, I think that's a pretty simple one to understand. It's about $150 a visit. So for particular, you know, a developer can say, well, my project's gonna last 12 months to build. Depending on when, we don't do inspections during the winter months, so they stop in November and they don't start again until March. So there's a couple of months in there where you wouldn't, wouldn't have the $150 inspection. So depending on when they get the occupancy of the building, typically erosion control inspections continue until the ground is stabilized. So my experience in other communities, if you're a developer who has a construction company that's making sure those fences are up, the inspections don't have to increase. So as long as you're managing a site well, you can minimize those costs. It's usually the people who, it's my experience who, the bills start to get more than normal. It's because they continually have silt fences that are falling down or they haven't seeded properly and you go out and it's still just mud, those types of things. So there's usually a direct correspondence of cost above normal rather than but usually most will you know, they're gonna be watching those things, so they're gonna want to keep those costs minimized.
They're aware of these costs at the outset. Like, they know that, for example, their stormwater is gonna have, that there's gonna be inspections on things that are gonna and what those costs are gonna be throughout the course of the project, right?
Yes. Sorry, so attached as an example, it's, it's probably be reviewed by Carl and I got, but it's a basically would be attached to any application to the city that basically they would sign and it would be acknowledged that they know that there's gonna be an escrow or some, they're gonna have a bill that might, they might receive. If the ordinance does allow for an estimate, so we've set it up in such a way that we just sort of have, sort of by policy, a a standard amount of escrow, like 2,500, 5,000, that kind of thing. But if somebody wanted us to give them an estimate, we could do that. It would take longer. So sometimes people are kind of in a rush, so we didn't want to make it like you have to have the estimate versus, but it's certainly something we could do from that perspective. And so if it may, we may have projects that involve attorney's cost, those would, could come out of the escrow. We may have environmental, there might be things that we have to hire an environmental specialist for. I mean, there's sort of, might be some abnormal, abnormal things that we might get that estimate. But that's something that certainly could be done if there was a concern.
On a traditional, sorry, on a traditional project, it's mainly gonna be the cost of our engineers who are directly billing us right now. And then the cost of the attorney, Nathan, to review documents required for a planned unit development or specific development plan, like we have on the agenda for Meta House. So all of these are billed on a, you know, per minute basis as we would normally be billed as a city. But instead of taking it out of city funds, we are taking out of a private developer funds to ensure that the private developer who is seeking the benefit and to build a structure to make money is paying for the entire project. So that the taxpayers aren't paying to build, you know, a Walgreens or a Chick-fil-A, that they are paying for the whole project from start to beginning. And it's our job here to manage to make sure that our attorney is, is billing only his time towards that type of project. And, and they do that in the bills now, but we will highlight those out and then take it from their escrow every time.
Yeah, that's my concern. Create a separate invoice for that with different billing numbers on it and everything and entirely separate, so you can just hand it to, hand it to them.
Yeah, and that's what we will do is have a separate invoice from our attorney and from our engineers, which will go in the file. And so if a developer wants to see what it might be billed for, every month they will get a statement that says, here's what you were billed from the previous month.
And we'll have to deal with, I guess, any complaints as they come up.
Yeah, other communities I've worked in, they out of 20 people complain, but they typically probably would have called about something else anyway.
Thirty of those are really from developers that have to recontinually resubmit and then have engineering documents reviewed again and again and again because they weren't right the first time. So those are where the costs start to add up.
Not trying to get, I think, you know, we shouldn't be absorbing it. I realize that, but anytime you're spending money on some, somebody didn't pick who's doing it.
Yeah.
There's always a challenge on that. Okay.
Alderman Schmalsling?
I, I like that there's the estimate aspect, so that a developer kind of can consider that when they're planning a development, you know. Is there certain things like I know it's harder to throw like a standard out there, but is there like, for this sort of thing, it'll cost us much? I know like on a more simple basis, we have like, you know, we have a building permit and you have HVAC, it kind of expected to cost this much. Just to give some guidance to a developer when they come in, thinking for example, like the individual who was entrusted in the prior Silver Spring House property, like this is what it might cost you to do this sort of development based on what you're talking about, so they can consider.
What we could do is we could work with Clark Deeds and we could work with Nathan to put together a, maybe a, I mean, no project is, is the same, but we could do a typical project and say, okay, here's your typical project. You're, you're in a planned development district, it's gonna be about $300 for the attorney to review. Your erosion control is gonna be a $50 permit, but you'll have annual inspections. You know, over the course of an 18-month project, you could anticipate X dollar amount. So we could kind of do a, a generalized schedule with assumptions and then that would be something that would be kind of informative for the developer. Of course, they could then abstract from that, like, oh, well, I have a 24-month project or I only have a six-month project, but it could be just kind of a, an example.
Right, I, I think that'd just be helpful to, to what Alder Doherty was saying, because essentially it's, it would help them know what they're getting into. Also, it'll help them recognize that there's costs if they're dragging something out and extending a project or resubmitting multiple times. Which is also to help everyone.
We could put what ifs, like, you know, what if, you know, your erosion control's not being maintained? Well, you're gonna have extra visits, which means it's gonna cost you more, that kind of thing, so.
It's great. Do other communities, this is the first I've heard of it, but I don't alter at other communities. So is this pretty standard practice across other North Shore or Milwaukee metro communities?
It is pretty standard practice, and in fact, we've been doing the bill back for, for Clark Deeds for quite a while. So we don't always get payment, but a lot of communities, just a lot of developers will just pay that bill that the finance department will send out. So this kind of formalizes that half, but then it, the escrow part makes it so that we're not kind of floating, you know, so the money from that perspective.
And if a developer doesn't get approved and they have a $3,000 bill out there, they probably won't reimburse the city for that. So this ensures collection of all fines owned to the city.
I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
I'm just curious, was there any project that happened in the past that prompted this ordinance to be created?
I don't think if there's any one project, I think it's a matter of a series of things where Carl and I have been reviewing things. We've also include, you know, Charlie in that. And then we've been realizing what the costs actually are and that with the, kind of the shift of erosion good curl going to Clark Deeds to make sure we're more compliant and stuff like that. There's a cost of that. And so I think it's just a combination of things that have just, and then when you kind of start to look at all these kind of points, we're like there's a better way of doing this.
Questions? Get a motion that up to the order. Okay.
Second.
Alderman Bailey, any? Right, all those in favor say aye. Those know? Motion carries. Do you want to just stay there? I'm gonna jump down to H, I, and J, which are the three meta house items. Did you want to speak to those before we?
Or I can really briefly mention them. So earlier today, we had a conversation with Sarah from Meta House. Their legal department wants to review the pilot a little bit longer. And we talked and we thought about breaking them up and we decided that it would just be best if we just take them as a whole group and just so I guess Meta House and staff are requesting that those three items get tabled or deferred to the June 12th. Hopefully, I think is the next meeting. So we'll just, if you're all okay with it, you can just make a motion to move it to June 12th and.
You get, can we and to
I move to postpone the item until the June 12th, the three items until the June 12th meeting.
Which is our second.
Second.
Alderman Gelhard, moved by Alderwoman Shaw to postpone H, I, and J to our next meeting on June the 12th. All those in favor, say aye. Host. Carries? Now we'll go back to item G, which is our last item of new business. So this one is an ordinance amending Chapter 5.8 residency restrictions for sex offenders and directing action for injunctive relief for violation thereof. And this is a, an amendment to the current one that we have, and I'll turn it over to the city administrator and the city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. I'll start off and I'll have Attorney Bear fill in some of the blanks on the original domicile changes. Essentially, this ordinance does a number of things. It changes the restriction from convicted sex offenders living within a certain amount of feet from facilities established in the city code from 2,000 to 1,200 feet. The map of the current establishments is listed in there as an exhibit, of course. As some of those items change, the map may change as well with it, but the ordinance would still say the same at 1,200 feet. Attorney Bear, do you want to talk about the original domicile or anything that I missed regarding the residency?
Thank you, I'd be happy to. So sort of working from the macro to the micro. A very reasonable question would be, how did we get here? Why, why are we rolling back some of our distances with respect to the restricted areas where certain types of sex offenders can't live? So it's, I think if you go back and you look at when these started to come about in the state of Wisconsin, what, they started from a, a, a very reasonable and a very important consideration, which is you don't want certain sex offenders living within. you don't want certain sex offenders living within close proximity to what they call child safety zones, areas around daycare, schools and and parks and things like that. And the state legislature was asked by communities, hey, why don't you make a uniform standard for the entire state? So that we don't have all of these overlapping and kind of similar, but different regulations. We can have, everyone can understand what the uniform process is and what the uniform standard is statewide. So the the state legislature has been hesitant to do that. They haven't done it. And so we're left with these, you know, anytime a municipality and a county passes one of these, all the neighboring communities have to follow suit, because otherwise you'll be the one community without it, and you'll end up with all of the placements after they're released. But here's, here's where the rubber hits the road, though, is if you have a community, you know, that has a restriction of, say, twenty five hundred feet, and that's a community that's highly densely populated in a small area. And then you take the parks and schools, it might leave literally zero percent of any of that community where anyone could ever live. And then you have another community that it may be more sparsely populated and more geographical area and region. And even at three thousand feet, there might be eighty percent of the community. So once these started popping up, not only in Wisconsin, but across the country, attorneys for individuals that have been released from prison have been challenging these on a couple of constitutional grounds, and one is due process and the other is equal protection. And there has been some trends that have come out. And and there are some things that we're learning as we go through decisions that are being made by not only the Seventh Circuit of the of the US Seventh Circuit, but also the other state or the other federal circuits around the country. And there's a couple of things that they've said. One of them, we've already taken care of, they said that unless there's an appeal process where someone can challenge, you know, the their their restricted residency, there's not due process. So a few years back, Glendale got ahead of the curve and did a nice job of including a an appeal process. But we've also learned some other things. Courts are coming out and saying, well, there's something called an original domicile restriction. And it says regardless of even if you could live five thousand feet from any of these restricted child safety zones. And and you weren't any, you couldn't even see one of these restricted areas without binoculars because you were so far away. Unless you lived in this community at the time you were arrested, you can't live here at all. You just, you can't live anywhere in the community, regardless of whether you're in a restricted area or not. And the courts have said that original domicile restriction, it's it it's 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 not enforceable, and it violates some constitutional constraints that aren't really relevant to the to the inquiry here, but it that that's what they've consistently now, those are the decisions that have been coming down. The other type of consistent decision that's been coming down is to say, well, if you have a distance restriction that leaves almost no livable area in your entire community, that that also is not enforceable. So at two thousand and feet, there there's some areas that are not touched by the two thousand, the the existing distance is two thousand feet. So there's some areas of the community that is not touched by that, but none of them that have any residential opportunities on it. So at two thousand feet, as it's written, we've, we've got a problem. And if we were challenged, we we'd have an issue. So what we did is we looked at different distances. We looked at fifteen hundred feet and it put us almost exactly at the same issue we have now, which is there's there's some more areas that are not touched by the the restricted area, but in terms of available residencies, it's still almost zero. And so we we played with that. We looked at a lot of the court decisions in terms of percentages. The other problem is their courts haven't said, you know, ninety percent is is constitutional, but ninety one percent is unconstitutional. There's no hard and fast rule, but based upon the trend that we've seen in the federal courts, we feel pretty good about two things. We feel good about that, the way that it works and the way that you look at the maps, that we still have people living a significant distance from the restricted areas, the way that it it plays out. And, you know, not nothing with us, you know, necessarily a direct sight line. And we feel good about, you know, where the where those things are. It it also offers a diversity of 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 available types of living arrangements, be it, you know, apartment or 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 rental or, you know, private residences owned and that kind of thing. And we also feel pretty good about at twelve hundred that if we were challenged in court, that we would, we would sustain an objection to that. And we we feel good about the fact that we could defend our ordinance and and be validated in court.
Also, the public record then that we reduce from two thousand feet to twelve hundred feet. So if there were a challenge, we could say we actually were mindful of this, and we no longer have the original domicile restriction, and we reduce it from two thousand feet to twelve hundred feet. I do have a question. For us, for consideration tonight is just the ordinance. We don't actually approve the map because the map is subject to change, right? We know that a movie theater is going to reopen in Bay Shore at some point soon. That's going to take Bay Shore and put it back on there. I also had a question looking at the residency map closely earlier today. We have a number of what are called parquettes. And those don't seem to be identified here. There is one at the at the intersection of Bethmar and Dexter. There's another one on Bel Air. To the two in the Crestwood neighborhood, there is one on Montclair. There's also a boat launch on Montclair. So I'm wondering, do those count? And if so, those would need to be included in the in the map itself will need to be updated periodically based on, you know, if someone opens a dance school or or something of that nature.
I'll answer the first question. We have the parquettes in Crestwood are both on here. They are really, really small in the corner and they establish.
Actually not, because my house falls in the okay zone and I live right across the street from a parquette. So my house and about six houses south of me. And then once again, you go out of this, I noticed looking very closely at the map, and I'm like, I live right across the street from a park. So.
Yeah, it's hard to see on here. I know, or it was under the assumption that we included those two in Crestwood because they are small parquettes or we define them as parks.
It looks like only the tot lot was included.
Yeah, there's one there. And then I, well, I can't tell on this map. I have to open it up on the the computer, whether the one in the south area, if that's the parquet you're referring to or not.
So there's, there's one at the very southern tip of Ames Terrace and Bel Air. And then there's another one at where Bethmar and Dexter come together. And Bethmar and Dexter come together in the gray area here. So so those were two. And then on Montclair, there is a little parquet area. It's actually on Montclair, right as Montclair turns and becomes Gene Nicolay. This is in the very southeast corner there of a gray zone once again. And then there's also a a a boat launch just off of Montclair there on the or kayak or a place you can put your kayaks in. I don't know if that counts as one of these or not, but.
I'm just, I'm looking at the definition under five points. Five point eight point six, and it includes a public park, parkway, park land or park facility. So that would seem to apply. And then aquatic facilities open to the public. So if it's a public launch.
We'll have to update the map.
I mean, you're right. I mean, but you're you're also correct in that the map really isn't part of the ordinance. It's it's it just the limit is within X amount. What we did is we asked our engineer to create the map based upon the definition we gave them. So there might be some tweaking we have to do, but I don't know that it changes. If we add those areas based upon where they are.
You know, I still, I still think. Those areas are actually right in the middle of gray areas.
Right, right. So I think, I think we're still going to be okay looking at where those are. I I don't, I don't think it's going to eliminate the rest of, it doesn't look like it eliminates a whole lot more.
Start from right there, there and come out.
All right. So we do have an ordinance before us. Can we get a motion to adopt in a second and then we can have further discussion?
Moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard is her second. Second, Bald woman Vukovich. It will be in going to discussion.
Parquet right across. The house is like.
Already added that movie theater on there.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the one in that's on Gene Nicolay and Montclair and the boat launch. Those actually take out part of that Montclair neighborhood. All right. So all right. So the map is not up for approval. The map will be subject to change based on is twelve, the twelve hundred feet is what's up for approval. So all right. So we have a motion and a second of any discussion on the on the ordinance. All right. All those in favor of approving the new ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Then we'll go on to commission committee board and staff reports. I will start with just a couple of things. Tomorrow is League of Wisconsin Municipalities Lobby Day. I am unfortunately unable to attend, but I know Carl is registered and I believe Tweak is also registered, so we'll have representation there tomorrow. Last week, JCI broke ground and city administrator, the city planner and the director of of development, we were and I, we were all there. Also, welcome to Glendale was present. So good turnout, good press coverage as well. Excited to see JCI expanding its campus and and doing so without any assistance from the city. So they didn't ask for a TIF on this. It's going to be about two hundred and fifty more employees added to their campus. And then the third thing is, just wanted to let everybody know that last week Carl and John Fellows and I had an opportunity to meet with folks from Fox Point to discuss Cardinal Stretch property. There is a desire of our neighbor to work together on that. So the Stretch property went on the market today. Went on the market today at a twenty four million dollar price tag. So we are, you know, I guess we're we're at this point sort of waiting and seeing as to who puts in an offer for it. So but if it does look to be a redevelopment, we would want to work together with Fox Point. They have different density requirements than us. They don't have a community development authority, so they're not going to TIF on their part of it. The one thing I will say is that if you look at the map, all the parking lots are in Glendale. There's a lot of opportunity for the Glendale side to see a significant redevelopment. Because only about was, I think it's three, three and a half buildings are in Glendale. Most of the buildings are actually on the Fox Point side. So so just wanted to let everybody know that we're we're having those those conversations and making sure that our communities are are talking. So that that's my report, and I will now go around the table. I'll start with the city administrator.
I have nothing tonight.
City attorney?
After the last meeting, someone had asked me about the appeal associated with the open records lawsuit. And I it it, we are still waiting for the Court of Appeals to come in with a decision. So I think it could be a couple more months yet.
Okay. Thank you. Chief?
I think you report.
All right, clerk? Okay, number one. Number six.
Is it going to Glenn will be meeting again on June seventh. Our opening day is June twenty one with the salute to veterans and the concert, the band playing is called High Country. And I, we will have a taps player. And if you would like to join us, I would love to have each and every one of you there for the salute to the veterans, which is at six fifteen. So it would be, if you can, please let me know if you can attend, because then I can include it in part of my opening remarks.
Thank you.
Nothing to report tonight.
Five.
Fourth of July, we have the good problem of having too many food vendors that we're looking into, but we still don't have enough volunteers. So please go and sign up on the the website, glendalefourthofjuly.com slash volunteer. Thank you.
Just following up on your comments about the Cardinal Stretch property, as you can imagine, I have been contacted by Mount Royal residents about that. They're very interested. So loop me in on whatever's going on there so I can keep those people abreast and have them complain to me as they usually do about everything. So.
All right, will do. Number four.
Nothing to report.
All right. So that concludes all the business portion of our meeting. We are agenda to go into a closed session. Our city administrator has been here with us now for a year. So and the the agenda says deputy city administrator, that should be city administrator. So we will be able to discuss the first year now. Carl hit one year last week. Yep. All right. So we get a motion then to go into closed session.
Moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard is her second. Second, Bald woman Shaw. All those in favor, convenient closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session.
And I believe we have cheesecake available for everybody as a celebration. If you want to grab something to eat before a closed session.
It is seven fifty nine PM. We had a motion by Alderman Doherty and second about a woman Shaw to reconvene and open session. There is no business coming out of the closed session. The closed session was just the violation of the city administrator at the end of a year one with the city. So there is no possible action on any closed session items. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Move Alderman Bailey, seconded by Alderwoman Shaw to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay? All right, John, would you hit the gavel for me? Stand adjourned.